Paul. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Pete Festerson?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a few observations today before we start, one of which is I had the opportunity to meet with the new Omaha Public Schools Superintendent Cheryl Logan last week and was very impressed with her and her commitment to our school district and moving us forward here. And I just want to say that I'm oftentimes, as we all are, out talking in the community and asked, what are the most important things you're working on? You know, is it the city budget today? Or is it fireworks? Or is it law enforcement issues? And although those are important, I would say and have said, the most important thing we need to do right now is to help the new superintendent be successful with the future of our Omaha Public Schools system and the over 50,000 students that attend there. I think we all need to get behind and earn this new energy and have it be a successful thing for our community, and I know we can. Two more short things. I want to note also the passing of Aretha Franklin this week. Obviously, a national figure and an American icon, but also touched local here locally. So I wanted to mention the significance of that and her life to those that live here in Omaha. But then thirdly, I want to note the queen in the city clerk's office, Carmen Johnson, was just engaged this week, so I want to pass my congratulations to her as well.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. Councilmembers, thank you all for being here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2019 recommended budget to increase the general fund and convention and tourism by 115,000 and by decreasing appropriation and other budgetary accounts contingency liability expense by 107,000 and city council by 8,000.
Is there a motion? Second, Mr. Harding.
Thanks. Hold on, I'm still getting set in here. So on this, I had an idea. Well, I agree, I think it's important to aggressively market Omaha and pursue opportunities. To bring people and events to Omaha, I won't be supporting this proposal. And as an alternative, I'd ask that we consider leaving the $107,000 in the contingency liability expense fund and then work with Mr. Baxton and his department to set the rules and regulations and parameters to award any funds or grants that we talked about doing. I think when the rules of the road are in place, we could then transfer the funds from the contingency liability expense fund to the convention tourism department non-personnel fund and then fund the recipients or the awardees. I don't think it's prudent stewardship of taxpayer dollars to be approving the transfer of the funds to be distributed in whole or in part to what appears to be a predetermined recipient as what is being sold as a competitive process without the process of application, required parameters, and rewards clearly defined. It's been mentioned that this action is a one-time request. However, if this council believes that taxpayer dollars should be used in this manner to promote tourism, which will result in increased hotel nights, eating at our restaurants, and shopping in our stores, all of which increase revenue to the city, then maybe we should consider ways looking at ways to fund something with a longer term than just one year. So again, while I said I think it's important to aggressively market Omaha and pursue those opportunities, I won't support this, but I would ask my colleagues to consider leaving the $107,000 in that contingency liability expense fund and work with the department and the director to work on the requirements, the parameters of what the award process will be for that. And so I know there's been a motion and a second for this, but I would certainly hope that that would be considered. I've talked with finance. I think they agree that it's maybe not customary to do it in that manner. It's certainly allowable, and I'll ask Mr. Curtis or Mr. Thielen if they would care to weigh in on that.
Steve Curtis, City Finance. I believe you could do it in the manner that you're suggesting. While it would be a little maybe outside the norm of how we normally do it, I do believe you could do that transfer later.
Okay. Mr. Thielen, would you concur?
I don't think my microphone, I guess my microphone is working. Alan Thielen with the Lot Department. Yeah, the charter says transfers between departments may be authorized by ordinance, so transfers of appropriations are possible later on.
Okay. All right, well, that's my idea. And again, I know you've got a motion and a second, but I think that would be a good way to maybe consider moving forward on this.
First of all, let me respond to that. And let me say a couple of things here. First of all, it's not, first of all, we've already indicated and it's already been said that we could do what we're doing now and we don't have to wait. Secondly, what we're attempting to do here is a one-time effort, one time only, to address the potential of having a jazz program for an entire weekend that puts heads on beds. Now, we're sitting here arguing with semantics and whether we should do it this way or that way. We already recognize that we could do it this way. There is no problem with doing it this way. To assume that we are going to, we have to wait for processes and procedures, sometimes we can do that, but there are issues that come up sometimes where you have an opportunity to do something, so you take the opportunity to do it. And more specifically for me, I have seen music festivals in other parts of the city, and I've watched them go really well. And I know the individuals that participate in those get $262 and other dollars that they have been aware of for a while. This is a one-time deal, and I take issue with the fact that I'm looking at just one entity alone. I'm looking at one entity with the possibility of doing something major down the road. So to say that I'm looking at one entity, if I were doing that, I would have not put this together so that all music festivals can participate. So I think that the appropriate time is now. I think that the arguments are while they do have, we have the ability to do what you say we can do right now, we can do this right now, and we should do it right now, especially for an area of town where it needs it the most. And I don't think we need to wait. And if it doesn't happen, it just doesn't happen. But we have the ability, we have the skill sets, we're putting it in the hands of someone who is a professional at it, when we're talking about the Convention and Visitors Bureau, they are putting together a packet that we can look at. And you have to remember, we don't have to do this until 2019, quite frankly. And so to do it, to have put it in place now, give Keith Baxton and his people an opportunity to put together an effort now to address these dollars through grants, I don't think there's any problem with that. And we have from now until the first of the year to get that done. So to not do it now and to wait until some other period of time when we have the opportunity to do something now, we should do it now. And I'm supportive of doing it now, and if you don't want to vote for it, don't vote for it. But I think we need to operate it now. I think we need to do what we need to do now in terms of addressing, making sure that we take every opportunity possible to bring in more people to the city of Omaha, especially in the downtown area and especially in the northeastern part of this city. We need to do that, and we don't need to wait.
I think, actually, I think I've got three points on that, which I think you kind of back up in part what I was saying.
There's another light on here. Ms. Melton's up first.
Mine wasn't, I hadn't finished yet, and my light's still on.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Harding.
One is, I did not say it was for one event only. I said in whole or in part. I wanted to make sure that that was clear. I wasn't singling, making it sound like it was for one event. Secondly, you mentioned that we have now until the end of the year to set things up, which is, which is, again, I'm sure we could work with the director and his department to do that. And the last item was, again, I think if this is something that puts heads on beds, as you said, and I think I mentioned that too, revenues to the city through hotel use, restaurant use, shopping in our shops, you know, if that's something that we need to further pursue, let's make it something other than just a one-time event.
Well, you know, I think we can look at that in the future, but I think right now, if we have the resources to help an organization get off the ground and others to expand, we ought to take the opportunity to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Melton.
Thank you. Well, and I don't know who could answer this question, but what organization are we talking about?
We're talking about all the organizations that have music festivals. So we're not talking about one. That's the issue here, and that's the thing that I think I need to address really harshly. We're not talking about one entity. We're talking about several entities that can apply for these dollars. But we're talking about one entity that may have the ability, if they can raise the dollars, to produce a jazz festival that we could do every year that put heads on beds and raises dollars for the city. And it does it in an area of town where it's needed.
No, and I understand, but we just keep referring to it as one entity. I mean, I think it would be, it would just be good for the people if we just knew who that was. And I think that's...
I have the name back in my office. I can get it if you want, but I don't know the official name of it. But I know that there are two individuals here, one from New York, another that doesn't even live in the country, I don't think, who are professional individuals who know how to bring jazz weekends to various cities. And they've got various cities on their resume that demonstrate how well they've done this. So that's what I'm talking about. And I'm not talking about, and I'm talking about just a one-time, if we want to do something that's more than one time, I'm not opposed to that. I'm just saying, right now, we've got an entity, and we have several other entities that want to expand, and if we have the dollars to do it and we have the interest in investing in our city, then I think we ought to take the opportunity to do that.
And I guess I would be supportive of that, as I've been very supportive of the Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau. I was supportive of setting up the 501(c)(3) that we deposit the funds in, that we have a committee that approves those funds so that they actually can still remain competitive in the market, which was the reason we did that. And I think that Mr. Baxton has done an excellent job in doing that and encouraging conventions and other things on coming to Omaha. I guess what normally when we have this, you have at least one or two or three of the entities that have the potential to at least come down, talk to us, call us. I think what I'm looking for is I just wanted more information, which I haven't been given any information other than there's just some entities out there. And so I think that's where my issue is. It's not that I'm not supportive of this, which is where I kind of like Councilman Harding's idea. Let's not earmark this money. Let's let it sit in this fund, and then once we get the information, then we can transfer that money for the purpose of either one entity or multiple entities for hopefully maybe more than one jazz festival, maybe multiple festivals and maybe in different areas. I don't, because we don't even know, I'm not sure where the festival is going to be. I think it's a fabulous opportunity, and I understand it. I just want, I just kind of want more information other than, there's an idea out here that's really good, so let's fund it.
I could give you the information. I could give you the information.
But I think that's where my struggle comes in today. If I know that I can keep the money, we can get the information, and we can transfer it later, maybe it is just one entity that we're giving it to. I mean, it may be worth it. It's just the problem is we don't know. And so to cap, I guess, to pass this and let the city know, well, there's some entities that we think we're going to give it to, but we can't tell you who they are, it's kind of a transparency problem for the taxpayer. And so that's, I mean, that's where I'm coming from, is when we do something, I want to be able to justify it. I want to be able when, you know, somebody stops me at Hy-Vee and says, what was that money for? I can't say, well, I don't know. There's a name somewhere that I need to get from someone. It just, I don't have the information to justify it. So although we do things that I know there are even, I think somebody was going to come down and testify against something else we were doing, I was able to justify it. I had people calling me and telling me they didn't want to see certain funds go to certain community things because they didn't think that they were essential city services. But you know what? I was able to justify it because I was able to specifically state what they do, why I supported it.
You know, I...
So that's, I mean, so this isn't, if I vote no, it's not a no vote against bringing a jazz festival here. It's who's doing it? How are they going to do it? Like, give us the information so that it's not just, well, it's somebody that's done it somewhere else and no specific information. That's my issue.
I'll take part in the blame for not knowing, I mean, for not getting the information to some of you, but for, in a couple of instances, not getting the information. But again, this has been an issue that's been out there for over a week. And the number of issues that we deal with on a regular basis, I may not have gotten to everybody, and that may be my fault, but the fact of the matter is, is that we have an obligation on both sides here. So if you have some questions about it, we've been knowing about this for over a week. It's been on the agenda. If we needed some clarification, let's make it a two-way street next time so that I, because I have the information. I can readily go get the information right now. I just assumed that everyone had all of the information, and if they didn't, part of it would be my fault. But the other side of that is, it's been out there for a couple of weeks, we should have known about it. And if you have some questions, we could have come to me about it. That's all I'm saying. Are you done, Ms. Melton?
I just want to say I remain supportive of bringing the festivals in. And again, my feeling is I wish we had more, and if we did just leave it here and none of us took it and moved it anywhere else, then we would have the ability to come up with who can apply, we could come up with the rules. So if it is going to be more than one entity, how do the other ones apply for it? How are they going to decide, you know, who's going to decide that and all that kind of information?
The council shouldn't come up with the rules. I think that should be Mr. Baxton's office that does that.
I would agree with that. And through the OCVB committee that I'm not on, and that's fine, but I trust, in fact, I don't know what three council members, I think Mr. Harding's on, I don't know what three council members are on it, because I'm not on it. And I trust the judgment of those committee members to help Mr. Baxton come up with that. Again, my opinion is just I think we need to have that information to present to the city before we vote on it. And I remain supportive of keeping that money set aside for the festivals that you're talking about.
Okay. And like I said, though, you know, I'll accept responsibility for some of it, but for a good portion of it, this has been out here for a while now, and if people had questions, I think everybody has my phone number, right? Just, well, I know, and I addressed them at pre-council, and if you wanted the other information, we could have gotten that. The information was available. The information's on my desk. I can go get it now. What I'm saying is this is a two-way street. If I'm, if, yes, I may not have gotten to everybody, but if you had questions, come ask me about it. Come ask me about it. I'm available all the time, so ask me about it. I would have given you the answers. Mr. Jerem.
Yeah, so a week ago, when I heard about the idea and saw the resolution, I asked Councilman Gray, what is this? And I got my questions answered. I didn't wait till the day of the budget vote. I didn't wait till the cameras are on. I asked council member to council member, what are you trying to do here? What's the goal? How will it work? Oh, what if it were competitive based and we had the professionals that already have policies and procedures for handling large conventions and large meetings and the consummate professionals and committees in place and the apparatus that can be borrowed from? And I learned that was in fact an idea that was open, and that's the route that it went. And we have already a Convention and Visitors Bureau that is filled with the professionals who handle these things every day. They have processes that where they can award to large convention and meetings coming to our city based upon certain established criteria, incentive funds, which they have to review and study and see if they qualify and meet the rules. And then if they do, they go to this committee that's created, and the chairman of the Parks and CVB Committee, Mr. Palermo, is one of the members, and then they vote. So I don't see why, when we have all the policies and procedures and professionals who are trained and equipped and experienced and adept at doing these things, where we would have the least bit of concern that the professionals can't have a grant process that's competitive-based in place by year-end with input from the committee and what that looks like, so that someone who, among other grant participants or potential recipients, might be this jazz fest and might be a winner, an award winner, who is so desperately trying to bring things to his part of the city, wouldn't have at a modest funding stream level in year one, an opportunity, not a guarantee, but an opportunity that those fund sources could be in place so that those sorts of things can get underway, and we can quit talking about it. Because I know one thing at City Hall we're good about. We're good about committees, we're good about talking, and politicians are good about talking, and sometimes they're short on action. And this is a chance for the rubber to meet the road for our city through a rather clever, creative advocacy of the councilmen from northeast Omaha who wants to try to do something, to bring a major event to the city. Who knows if this event will qualify? Who knows if they'll get through the grant process and be it awarded the money? But to sit here and say there's questions about how it's going to be selected, that's to call into question the integrity of our professionals at the CVB Bureau, like Mr. Baxton. And until today, I hadn't heard that implication or suggestion made. I have the utmost confidence in that department, and I have the utmost confidence in that committee that has one council member on it, it has the city attorney on it, and it has Mr. Baxton on it. So to suggest that somehow, if this one entity applies and if they are recommended for a grant, and when that grant gets to this committee with the city attorney, Mr. Baxton, and Mr. Palermo on it, that they're somehow going to be hanky-panky to predetermine the outcome, to me, makes no sense. And it's not the experience of the city. And it calls into question the professionals who are running these departments in our city and making these decisions. And to me, that's offensive. That's inappropriate. That crossed the line. I get legitimate policy decisions and debates. I get philosophical differences. I get, let's vote no. But I don't get, wait until the day of the meeting, wait until the lights and the cameras are on, and I don't get call into question the professionals who make these decisions. To me, that crosses the line. His phone, he's one of the most accessible people you'll ever meet, the president of this council, and no one approaches him before today with opposition. The opposition started today at 10:30 this morning at pre-council. That's just, that raises questions for me. That isn't how we do things down here. This is an ambush. We're professionals, and that's the way and the respect the president of this council deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm trying to add a little humor here. I know you're all jazzed about this.
Don't give him that.
Yeah, I do that. I do need that. Go on. Thoroughly, for those of you who don't know, I sort of relish what's going on here, the back and forth, because that's where I, was that before I came on the city council? Because I do, we do need the dialogue. And let me, several days ago, when I read in the paper about this idea and the support from some of the city council, I thought to myself, wow, I got sort of, you know, this is sort of a surprise, even though I had heard something was going on. But today, and I was giving our president sort of a bad time this morning, and I asked, let me go to your office. So I went to his office, and he did show me the documents that you're talking about. And I'll say it's part of our, both of us, because you probably should have given that a little bit more, and I should have gone in after seeing that in the paper. You know, I understand that. But I, as I said this morning, we have to put some of these things in perspective, because this is a thing that does irritate me. Because even though this is 100,000 or 200,000, it's a relatively small part of the total budget. Mr. Curtis, what is our total budget this coming year?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. The total budget's just over $1 billion.
Total budget, over $1 billion. Now, we're sitting up here for going to be like probably a half hour talking about 100, 200,000, which I know is significant. I'm not downplaying that. But what I like to have us do, I would like to have the public really sit on and watch us when we talk about every segment of that budget. We talk to the fire, we talk to the police, we talk to the finance, the library. You ought to see that part of the discussion. I don't see that much discussion in those meetings as I have today. That's the part that irritates me. And I can vote no or yes on this. I do happen, the thing about it is going for me, I do like jazz, and I don't want to go back down to New Orleans to see it. So I am sort of, that's, you have my curiosity there. But I think we have to look at this thing totally. Is this, this discussion, and there are some legitimate ideas over here, I will say that, but also I hear on this side, because I do understand that the person who is in charge of what happens in the city when it comes to tourism like that, I do trust that person also. But let's just sort of realize, just balance this out. Why have we not talked more about the billion dollars? That's my question. And there are people out there who I know, I'm speaking to some of the people out there because they question my vote on this particular issue. Check it all out. Don't look at something that seems to be a little, has quotations around, check the whole thing out. Every segment of that budget. And I will commend the mayor, she works her, well, she does, she does a good job, is what I'm trying to say. I've got to be careful here. So it's not that nobody's really not doing their job, but I just, it's sort of in perspective. And like you say, if you feel this is good for the city, a one-time shot is what I'm hearing, and the amount of money, and you are not going to be the determinator or the person who determines what it's all about, that's, I'm being assured by that.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, I think it's important to put in perspective what we're doing here today. What's being proposed here is just an amendment to the budget. It'd move some money from one item to another line item that could be accessible about six months from now and allows the director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau to put a structure around it, as he talked about this morning. It would be transparent to people, transparent to potential applicants, not for any one potential event, but probably several events. In fact, one event we talked about this morning was the Omaha Festival, just happened here this weekend. Very successful, just expanded to two days, 8,000 people per day, most of which are from outside of Omaha. They would be a good candidate for this as well. So I have faith in Mr. Baxton as well, that he can build a structure around what this would be, have a process about how that could be distributed in a transparent way, much like he does with conventions. like he does with conventions every day. And I think the other point to keep in mind here, too, is that although we are increasing our contribution to the C V B every year by about $200,000 per contract with the county, we're still about $1 or $2 million behind our peer cities and what we do for these kind of events. So for me, this is something worth supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
You know, my mother always told me to maybe bite my tongue before I say something, and I disappointed my mother on more than one occasion, and even though she's passed away, I'll disappoint her again. I don't remember in any of my comments, did I make any disparaging remarks or question the integrity of any one of my colleagues or any director. As a matter of fact, I think I made some praising comments of Director Backson and his department. And to make the implication that I waited for the lights and the cameras to raise these issues, I'm not good-looking enough to wait for the cameras and the lights to raise these issues. I raised some of these issues at pre-council. The idea to leave this in the fund, actually, it was about three minutes before council started when I had a discussion with finance to see if that was even possible. I think these, you know, to have these comments and these conversations is exactly why we meet as a council in public, is to have those open and frank conversations. Again, I'm not saying that our department can't come up, or that the Visitors and Convention Bureau can't come up with the rules of the road for these, for these potential awards. Again, if it's something that's important to the city of Omaha to help produce, you know, future revenues, I'm all for that. And I'm all for doing that for more than just one year. So with that, I'd like to call the question.
Question's been called. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Melton.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, five to two. Item seven, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2019 recommended budget to increase the general fund and other budgetary accounts, community service programs by 20,000, and by decreasing appropriations and other budgetary accounts contingency liability expense by $11,826 and city council by $8,174.
Vote on this is today. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, as we've just heard in our conversation, when we talk about the total budget of over $1 billion, I'm very supportive of this $20,000 that I asked for the PACE program. The PACE program isn't an idea. It isn't a plan. It's a proven group and organization that has made a difference, that is award-winning, that other cities are trying to model, to reach out and to help the at-risk youth in South Omaha, North Omaha, and West Omaha. They continue to build the police and community relations, and there's a lot of kids that, through these sports, have that positive mentor, that person to look up to, that really gets them on the right step forward. Again, we've heard about the amount of the budget, and I did look this afternoon for a calculator, and I just couldn't find one that would tell me what the percentage this would be of the budget for this amendment. It's very, very small. But the amount that it reaches out to the community to help is huge. Besides a story that was printed a couple of weeks ago, not many people knew that I actually had volunteered to coach on one of these PACE teams. And I seen at firsthand the impact of not only the police, but the hundreds of volunteers who took up their free time to help the kids, the kids that otherwise wouldn't have that opportunity. And what this money will bring will be an extra field or two. And what those fields bring are extra kids to come out, to get off the street, to reduce crime, graffiti, and all the problems that we know could happen with these kids, just like myself when I wasn't busy as a kid. You get into, you get into trouble. And this is a great way, through sports, to keep them active and also engaged and with that positive role that they have through the police. So I will be supporting this. And that's it for now, in case there's any other lights.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I also support this item. I was pleased, two years ago, to initiate the first contribution to the PACE organization from the city in a similar amount. It was $20,000 at the time. And I think it was one of the most important and best investments we've had through our budget process, given how far that program has come now. And at the time, it was sort of the first nod of public funding to match what had been private funding and sort of that stamp of approval of a great partnership. And I've been pleased to see it progress in the city budget since. And I think as they continue to grow and take this to the next level, this increase is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gray, Mr. Palermo, I'd like to have your answer to this question. The amount of money, and I do not mean to discount that, but I need to know where that money's coming from.
Out of the 200,000?
Yeah, where is that? What a council, what?
The contingency account that we have as a council.
And the city council's travel budget.
And the city council's travel budget.
Okay, so, okay, that's the part I want to know.
Yeah, the city council's travel budget is the other part of it, yes.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that's clear, that at least those people who use the travel budget, they are actually giving up that part to, for these projects, if they do.
Yeah. And Mr. Pauls, if I can make a comment on that, because I'm glad you raised that. In order to do these two amendments, the requirement was there to come up with the dollars from some other, some other source that comes from the city council. I thought long and hard about this. I mean, this was not something that I did, either one of these that I'm supportive of today, did I not think long and hard about it? Because I believe in the, I believe in the necessity for elected officials to travel, to see what other cities are doing, to, for example, the idea about the land bank came from several visits that I had made to Cleveland and St. Louis and a couple of other places. The abandoned building ordinance, when I was, we were talking with Jay about, Jay Davis about it at the time, I went to some of the places that he was visiting as well to determine what they, how they operate their abandoned and neglected building ordinance, how they operate their land bank, what they do with a couple of other areas that, when I went to visit and brought that information back, a lot of that got instituted into law. So it was not, it was not a spur of the moment, nor did I do this without giving it considerable thought. Because I think travel is significantly important, especially for elected officials. It's significantly important to me that we have access to a travel budget. And to give it up this one year for the sake of doing something that, number one, will get more kids off the street, and number two, has the potential to put significant numbers of heads on beds through a one-time effort, I thought for one year, it was worth it to forego that travel budget.
Okay. I do have a question for it, Mr. Captain Palermo. What was your win-loss record?
At what?
At, he's a coach.
I don't like to brag, but we were a regular season champ. Sorry, you had.
Wow.
He had me ask that question. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Palermo, you had another, your light was.
I did. I was just going to answer Councilman Pauls' question with Mr. Curtis.
Steve Curtis, City Finance.
Could you give me the appropriate terminology for where this money is coming from?
Yeah, I think everybody was pretty close to right on. It is coming from the contingency account. We also talked today about it, truly, the miscellaneous expense. And out of that, it's $11,826. The remainder, $8,174, came out of the city council's travel budget.
So then it is city money that's budgeted. It's just budgeted for the city council members to decide how to spend that money.
Yeah, it's miscellaneous expense. So I guess it's, whatever discretion the city council has as far as other needs they see.
Okay, thank you. And if I could just add one more thing. And as we continue to spend a lot of time talking about a very small percentage of the money, or actually the percentage of the overall budget, if you look at all the different programs that we're giving money to throughout the city, and this money we're asking for, for more fields and more kids, I don't know if I mentioned, but PACE right now is serving over 3,000 kids. So if anybody'd like to do the math at home and take the city investment by the kids, by what it's actually saving us through upgrading, taking care of our parks, which PACE does, from mowing to tilling to grading to seeding to everything they do, I think it's very, it's a good cost savings to the city. The more we invest, not only for the kids that are keeping them out of trouble, but for the city departments that no longer, or at least are not taking care of these certain areas. Thank you.
Thank you. We need a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. No further lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, a resolution to raise revenue estimates and revise the expenditures of the 2019 budget as listed on the agenda due to the areas annexed into the city effective August 29, 2018.
Moved and seconded to approve. Item eight, no lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item ten, a resolution to approve the 2019 budget of the city of Omaha, estimated by the mayor and the finance director with the revisions adopted by the city council at this meeting.
Moved and seconded to approve. Item ten, no lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item ten is approved, seven to zero. Item eleven, a resolution to approve the 2019 to 2024 capital improvement program. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Mr. Festerson. Oh, it's a public hearing? Yeah, public hearing, I'm sorry. Are those in favor? Would you come down to the mic, please? Any of those in favor of item 11? In favor?
No.
Yes, now.
Lee Myers, 105 South Ninth Street, number 603. You have to pass the CIP, and I'm here to say, please do. But I'd like to say it's a pretty document, but it's also more obfuscation than transparency. It reminds me of the nursery story, the emperor who spends a lot of treasure, gold, but then going down the street, a little boy or an old curmudgeon says, "The emperor has no clothes on." This CIP goes up on the shelf, forgot about for another 11 months. But it's not a working document. If it were a working document, it would be a database. It would be data in the database that could be analyzed. You could look at it, and you could see what's going on. It's a PDF. Mode Shift Omaha has key punched seven past CIPs into a database so that it could be analyzed. The city sometimes says a couple hundred thousand dollars would make this a database. You have the Douglas Omaha G I S, which is a database built on maps. It could go in there. Mode Shift used an open-source database. It doesn't take $200,000 or a couple Jazz Festivals to get the CIP into a database. Expenditures. Previous CIPs had no expenditures in there, even though they were demanded by law. This one has some expenditures, but how can you go on year after year without having a complete analysis of the expenditures compared to the CIP? Conformed to the master plan, I was at a MECA board meeting this morning where MECA was explaining how their sales force that goes out promoting arena events and convention events wears orange socks to highlight the walkability of our city. The chamber is trying to promote walkability to get young workers to work in town. Does this CIP conform to the master plan and walkability ideas? That is a really good question and would make some good discussion. But what we have is by decree, the decree says it conforms. But there's no discussion, we would love to be part of a discussion to see how, and whether it is a walkable city and does a CIP conform to what MECA is saying our city is. Prioritization. The projects in the CIP are supposed to be prioritaries by the planning department. Can't find them. Physical conservatives, the vote of the people was to increase the transportation bond from 50 million to 150 million. So this CIP explains that 150. How can you say that a tripling of the transportation bond, the bond money extracted from the city is three times what it was before, but yet it isn't a tax increase? Where does the 150, the 100 million extra dollars come from, if not an increase in taxes? If you, you know, a decent administration said that they spent 44 million resurfacing 400 lane miles. If you divide that out, that's $111,000 per lane mile. The city, your city has 5,000 lane miles. If you say, all right, the city of generous, useful life is 20 years, that means 250 lane miles need to be repaired every year to keep ahead of potholes or deteriorating streets. 250 miles times 111,000 is 27 million. That's half. I mean, what you're spending for potholes is half that required 27 million. So how do the pothole maintenance intermingle with this CIP money? Good question. Let's have some discussion about that. It affects each other, because obviously if you're, if it's in the CIP, it's for 15 years or longer. Maintenance is for less. How do those fit together? How do they work? Is anybody telling you that you can't have both? You can't maintain your streets and you can't build new lane miles out west? Where are the fiscal conservatives, when we really need them, saying you can't do both? Money's not there to do both. But we kind of skate by, we pass the CIP, put it on the shelf. I wished I had an imaginary can here to give to you so that you can kick the imaginary can down the imaginary road. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard on item number 11, the capital improvement budget? Are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Thank you. Larry Store, 1015 Lafayette Avenue.
Can I get you in front of the microphones, please, so we can hear you better? Yes, sir. Those two, thank you.
Please go get that name for me.
Please do what?
Please go get that name for me. I would like to know, the outsiders that are coming in and promising us that they're going to do these things, I would like to spend the money on our local people. I was at a.
This is a, we're talking.
I was at a venue last night, sir, that plays very good music.
Yeah, but we're talking. Yeah, but we're talking about the capital improvement...
Our local people, excuse me.
We're talking about the capital improvement...
Excuse me, I am talking about it right now, if you won't interrupt me.
Okay.
I'm talking about it right now.
Okay.
We have local people here in Omaha. We do not have to go to New York or this other city to get people to come in here to recommend a festival to play jazz.
We're talking about the capital improvement budget.
Well, take the money out of that project and put it in capital improvement.
Okay, you can't do that.
Stop going to outsiders for this, please. I pay over $400 a month, property taxes.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yep, thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing that the public hearing is closed, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President, and thanks, Mr. Myers, for your testimony. I agree with some of the points you were making there. And what I intended to say about this was also to build off Councilman Paul's earlier observation, and that we spent an awful lot of time talking about the city's general fund, which is important, and that was $400 million this year. But the city's capital improvement plan, which is the CIP, is $600 million this year, and that's just this year. The CIP is a six-year plan, so we're talking about billions of dollars represented in this plan that we're voting on here today. And we had a bit of a conversation about this during our public hearing on the budget, that it might be a good idea to consider going forward, a hearing just on the CIP itself. To me, I think that's a good idea. There's an awful lot of really important stuff in here, streets, parks, library facilities, fire rescue, police precincts. This is a huge part of what a city does, that I think sometimes does get short shrift when we're talking about just the general fund, or even just a couple items on the general fund, which is what we did today. So I, for one, and as chair of the planning committee, would be interested in exploring that with my council members and committee members. I think the planning department, in this case, since they are in charge of putting this document together, to see how that might be done better going forward in a more transparent way, when we talk about transit issue and transportation and the many issues that are involved in this document, and very important for the future of our city. So I'll be supportive of this today, but do want to explore that going forward as we chart the process again for next year. And with that, I'd motion to approve.
Moved and seconded to approve, Mr. Jaram.
Yes, it's, I've been saying, and calling for the finance department to have this document be a livable, breathable data document that's available on the web, where anyone can click on an item on the CIP, whether it's been done or not, see where it is in the process with those that are under construction, or having been completed in the terms of the years, you could click on it and see the expenditures, so that the public could know and have absolute transparency and confidence as to how the money was being spent, whether a project was on time, whether it was on budget, whether it was over budget. But I don't see any reason why there can't be more transparency in the CIP process. Every winter, I think it's late winter, the process begins where different ideas for CIP projects are floated, and we have the ability to make requests that get evaluated and studied. I don't know why that process can't be done right here, in this room, under the public's watch, where the, analogous to the CDBG process, where there's a deadline for applications, where, you know, public works or whoever, parks, public safety, all the different parts of the CIP would come in, they'd have their requests. The process could be aired out with a public hearing, like Mr. Festerson's saying, where the public knows how the prioritization is done, how programs are scored, how these priorities are actually made. And there are, not every one of them, I think, gets through that entire process. There's what I would call the latecomers, emerging projects, and there's flexibility as this puts it together, and I get that. But I think for most of the items that find their way into this document, there could be a public process, at least in terms of being able to see how these things happen, how things are prioritized. You know, our city engineers and public works director, they're very bright people, and I'm sure if they had to defend why they were prioritizing a project to do the X bridge versus the Y walkway, they could give you the score sheet, and they could defend the decisions that they're making. Or why the fire chief thinks the new fire station at 40th and Q is more important than the one out that you should be getting in your district pretty soon, Councilmember Melton. But if that all happened here, you wouldn't have people like Mr. Myers, who's curiosity, because it currently remains unknown, and how's this massive funding obligation and plan for the city, how is it put together? How are things prioritized? How do you get in this thing? And then, once it is in there, how did it do? Was it on time? Did it get done? Was it over budget, under budget? I don't see why, and now that it's 2018, I thought the same in 17, 16, and we'll keep asking for it, and I think we're making a little progress in that regard, Mr. Curtis. But can you, what can you tell us about your interest and efforts to advance the cause of transparency to the public in terms of the dollars that are expended, so that people can see the results of the spending of this program?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. We work along with planning to put this document together, and I think we would be more than happy to make it as transparent as we can. It's currently posted on two different places, it's not an interactive document at this time. It has quite a bit more information with a revamp that I think the planning department did here in the last year or so. We have looked at products to try to make it more robust, I guess I'd say, and we haven't settled on anything as of yet.
Thank you. Mr. Fanslaw, your department has action plans that it has to put together for the federal government, and has applications for that, it has deadlines for the submission, and has a public hearing where people can come in and testify as to their support or opposition to certain proposals. Why couldn't there be a part of the CIP process where your department could have a similar sort of thing for CIP proposals?
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. I guess I don't see a reason why we couldn't, we just have never done it. We've never planned out that process and how it might look, and who we need to work with to get that done.
Well, I'm not on the planning committee, but I would ask our planning committee members and the planning department in concert with the other departments to think about that, and to see if you are open to it, if that could be a part of this process. So that people like Mr. Myers, the many people in his organization, Mode Shift, if they wish to weigh in, or anyone else in the public wanted to come in and tell us what they thought about what should be in the CIP, or what was being proposed to be in the CIP, along that line. I think that would be a significant improvement to transparency in this process. And we'll explain, where's that 100 million more coming from, without a tax increase, and how the debt service works, and how we can leverage through the annexation and the additional property taxes coming in, and sales taxes, those sorts of things. So I appreciate the finance department and planning department being open to this, and I hope that the planning committee can take it up and move the ball forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Melton.
Well, and I want to commend finance and planning, I'm not sure which one is responsible for the new CIP layout that we've had, which makes it a lot easier to read. You know, when I first started on council five years ago, I have to say, you know, I read the budget, we could get through it, I thought the budget was great, gave a lot of information, but could be read by anybody, a newbie on council even. However, the CIP, I needed somebody to come down for an hour and actually teach me how to read the CIP, and I think I was still going back to Mr. Douding and Mr. Scarpello in our office, going, "Okay, where do I find this?" It was in there, but I couldn't even find it, when I was looking for my projects in my own district. The new layout of the CIP, I want to say, is a definite step in the right direction. I do know I was part of that discussion, Mr. Festerson, when we talked about after our budget hearings this year, why don't we have CIP? What we may need to do would be my suggestion, because there's so many different departments. We have Parks Department, we have Public Works Department, we have the library, we have facilities. What we may want to do is, instead of having an afternoon of the budget hearings with the department heads, we spread that out to an entire day and spend more time with each department head, and then include the CIP projects in there, so that we're looking at the CIP kind of department by department with that department head. I know it's going to take us an entire day to get through it, instead of half a day, I'm definitely willing to give the extra time. And I do think we would be able to answer more questions, or if Mr. Myers wanted to come and attend that, he would be able to get some of that education that I was able to get, and that I didn't have until I was actually elected to the city council. So to figure out, or potholes taken out of the general fund, and then CIP is the permanent projects, and how does the bonding work, and how can we pass the bonds and pay the debt off without raising the taxes, which we're able to do? And we're still able to increase and triple that, because actually we're getting a better bond rating, so we're able to take out more bonds in order to pay that. And, you know, that's not something that they're teaching in our high schools right now, is how the city council budget works, which would be an interesting, be an interesting class, and I think kids would probably get a lot out of it.
Unless you're a step up.
They actually can see it working, and they learn it. So, and so I appreciate the questions that Mr. Myers has, and they can all be answered. We actually have those answers, and I think it would be important to maybe share those and give the community the opportunity. So that would be my suggestion. I think the CIP can be a complicated document. What a lot of people don't understand is they might see 120th Street being widened, and it's in the CIP every year, and then every year it gets pushed back here, and every year it gets pushed back here. And to understand how and why that happens, that it's not just Mr. Fanslaw making that determination, but it, we work with the federal government, and a lot of those projects are actually federally funded, so we're depending on the federal dollars and the federal schedule, so we have to rework our own schedules in order to work with the federal government and do it on their timeline, then we have to reprioritize our projects. They do, there's a lot of work that goes into it behind the scenes, that I think our directors, whom I have a lot of respect for each and every one of them, along with our president, all of them put a lot of time into that, and you as well, Mr. President. And so I think it would be important for the city to see how much time, effort, and thought goes into the CIP. I understand that maybe the inner working of a database online, I think that's always something that we can work towards, but I also wanted to just call attention to the new layout of the CIP that I think was great, and makes it a lot more, it's a lot more accessible and easy to read by the public, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, just one last comment I forgot to mention, too. I want to remind the public, and also council members, that this is an amendable document. The city council can amend the CIP, just like we amend the budget today. We don't do it very often, because it's a pretty complicated source of revenue from state, federal, and local sources, that must balance out. I think the last time I recall was in 2005 and 2006, when we did amend it, and that was the genesis of some of the projects in Dundee and Benson and Florence, that I think were very responsive to the needs and desires of my district, for example. So that is possible to do, but I think it's much preferable to do it upfront and in cooperation with city departments on the front end, and engage in the public that way as well. So I'll speak for the planning committee in saying we'll take up the challenge to pursue this further. Thanks.
Thank you. There are no further lights, it's been moved and seconded to approve item 11, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Sorry, items 12 to 15 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Coventry Ridge, located northwest of Coventry Drive and Harrison Street. Planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item 12, an ordinance to rezonance property from DR District, R4 District, and R6 District to DR District. Item 13, an ordinance to rezonance property from DR District and R6 District to R4 District. Item 14, a resolution to approve the final plat for Coventry Ridge, and the applicant is requesting an amendment. Item 15, a resolution to approve the Coventry Ridge subdivision agreement.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 12 through 15, are today proponents, please?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer. We're really here simply to answer any questions that you might have. There are a couple housekeeping items on the various projects that are before you today on the Coventry. With respect to item 14 on the final plat, the final plat is actually one of three pages, and for whatever reason, only pages one and three made, I think, your packet and the agenda today, so I wanted to, that's the amendment, is to just include the complete plat. So I've got the exhibit here, again, it was one of three, one and three were there, but page two wasn't, so it's an amendment to include page two of the final plat.
It's on 14, just on 14.
Yeah, it's item number 14. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding this.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve the amendment 14, there are no further lights, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 16 to 19 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Coventry Replat 9, located west of 209th Street and George B. Lake Parkway. Planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item 16, an ordinance to rezonance property from DR District and R4 District to R4 District. Item 17, an ordinance to rezonance property from DR District to DR District. Item 18, a resolution to approve the final plat for Coventry Replat 9. Item 19, a resolution to approve the First Amendment to the Coventry Replat 9 subdivision agreement, and the applicant is requesting an amendment of the whole for 19.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 16 through 19, are today proponents, please?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer, simply here to answer any questions regarding this particular item as well. With respect to item number 19 in the packet, it had a subdivision agreement that was in draft form, and actually what it's supposed to be before the council was a First Amendment to the subdivision agreement, and so I'm just asking for that to be amended, to have the correct First Amendment to the subdivision agreement, instead of this draft subdivision agreement that really didn't apply. So with that, that's the amendment on number 19.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve item, the amendment to item 19, there are no lights, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 20 to 23 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Coventry North, located west of 204th and Q Streets. Planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item 20, an ordinance to rezonance property from AG District to MU District. Item 21, a resolution to approve the final plat for Coventry North. Item 22, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the Coventry North Mixed Use District Development Agreement. Item 23, a resolution to approve the Coventry North Subdivision Agreement.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 20 through 23, are today proponents, please?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer, simply here to answer any questions, and also to request an amendment to item number 22. It's the ordinance to rezone the property to mixed use, but it has no reference to the actual lot that's in question, which I just proposed an amendment in the first paragraph, and I talked to Liza, the clerk, about that, and it would just be to include Lot 1 Coventry North, as far as the lot that actually is being rezoned to MU in the ordinance. So with that, I think you have the amendment.
I do.
So. Yeah, Lot 1 Coventry North, correct.
Thank you. Well, let me make sure that, are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, it's been moved and seconded, the amendment?
Are you seconding?
I'm seconding your amendment. Yeah, moved and seconded to amendment, there are no lights, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 24 to 28 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Coventry located northwest of 204th and Harrison Streets. Planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item 24, an ordinance to rezonance property from AG District and R4 District to MU District. Item 25, an ordinance to rezonance property from AG District and R4 District to DR District. Item 26, a resolution to approve the final plat for Coventry. Item 27, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the Coventry Mixed Use District Development Agreement. Item 28, a resolution to approve the Coventry Subdivision Agreement.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 24 through 28 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road appearing on behalf of the developer. Again, here to answer any questions and also propose an amendment to item number 27, which is the ordinance approving the major amendment to the mixed use development agreement in that particular first paragraph of the ordinance. It does not refer to the lot, so I just wanted to make sure we included lots 99 through 110 and outlots F, G, and H in the ordinance approving the major amendment to the mixed use development agreement and the ordinance approving the mixed use zoning.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Move to amend 27, but the lots, lots 99 through 100, outlots F, G, and H.
110.
It's 110.
What I said, 100, 99 through 100, and outlots F, G, and H.
Second. No lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Moved and seconded to approve items 24 through 28. No lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 29, an ordinance to rezonance property located at 1401 Jackson Street from DS District to CBD District. Planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 29 is today. Proponents, please. Proponents for 29. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Moving and seconded to approve item 29.
There are no lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 29 is approved, seven to zero. Item 30, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at 3203 North 204th Street. Planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 30 is today. Proponents, please. Proponent? No? Are there any opponents? They both got them. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 30. No lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 30 is approved, seven to zero. Item 31, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI-3 PL overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at 11910 West Dodge Road and 11815 Webster Street. Planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 31 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 31. No lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 31 is approved, seven to zero. Item 32, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for the Next Big Thing LLC doing business as Jurassic Plastic Vinyl Lounge located at 1118B Howard Street is communication opposition.
Public hearing on agenda item number 32 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Here on behalf of the applicant, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 32. No lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 33, an application to consider a special designated liquor license for Havana Garage doing business as Havana Garage for an Oktoberfest event at the parking lot of Rathgellar Beer House located at 4602 Farnham Street on September 8th, or 7th and 8th, 20 to 18, from noon to 2:00 AM with music until 1:30 AM each night.
Public hearing on agenda item number 33 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Chaz Klein, 1008 Howard Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Could I make one note?
You can make a note.
I can't?
Yeah, just a note.
A note?
No, go ahead.
I would like to note that we'd like to move the music to close at midnight.
Close at midnight?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think my team was a little aggressive.
Okay.
And I'm going to be, I'm a little tired.
That was one of the questions. Motion to allow amendment to midnight on music.
Second. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Consent agenda?
Yeah, sorry. I just had to make some notes.
I thought, no, I was looking at, I thought I lost something.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 34 through 36 were held on August 14, 2018.
Moved to approve.
Moved and seconded to approve 34 through 36. No lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 37 through 60 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Can form a line.
This is on agenda item number 59, McCoosie City, Omaha Law Department. This is regarding the contract after the bidding process for the traffic diversion program between the city. I am recommending, as my letter indicated, to the council that we go with the National Safety Council of Nebraska. The letter I sent to the council indicates the reasons behind the decision. There are two members from the Safety Council here to answer any questions that might come up about their program. That would be Mr. Chavis and Ms. Booth, both from the organization. As I indicated in the letter that I sent to the council, there were only two bids that we received, and in reaking my decision, I compared the bids to obviously what the RFQ required, and then I compared the bids to each other, and my decision was that the National Safety Council's bid was the better choice between the two. The issue isn't what's wrong with the bid submitted by Cornhusker Driving School, it's the issue is better, what's right with the bid submitted by the National Safety Council. My letter indicates several reasons for that conclusion in addition to what I indicated in the letter that I sent to the council regarding the decision. I think in looking at what my office needs, what the public needs for this program, that the Safety Council is better able to deliver what the people need. There was a question this morning, I believe from Mr. Harding regarding the cost. I have the exact numbers now regarding the cost associated with what the citizens would be required to pay. Cornhusker Driving School is offering to offer the stock class, which is for the more minor traffic offenses at $89 per person, and they're offering to do the more serious driving offense class, also known as the star class, for $130. That is more than what the National Safety Council is offering. They're offering their amounts for the stock class at $107 and the star class at $199. One point that I want to raise about the cost, since that was brought up, traffic offense tickets vary in the ranges. There are offenses that only are a $25 fine, there are offenses that go up to $300, $400, $500 a fine if you choose to pay that fine. And what I want to stress about the cost so that there's not too much getting hung up on it is, that's the cost that these respective organizations believe that they need to charge in order to operate the program, run their operations, and other such decisions that they make with the money. But what I can tell you is the benefit to the drivers, in the two years that I've been city prosecutor, I've never heard anybody complain with $107, which is traditionally what people are taking. Most people do not take the star class. That is a very small subset of the 10,000 people that we send to traffic school diversion every year. Maybe about 1,000 or 1,500 people take the star class. It's primarily the stock class that people take. But those fines, as I said, can range from $25 up to three-digit numbers. And when thinking about the cost of the program there is that should get factored in is, if you do decide, so people have often said, why would I take the class when I just could pay the $25 fine instead? Why spend $107 when I can take for $25? Well, there's a huge benefit to it. One is $25, you also have to pay the additional $49 in the court costs. Now you have a conviction, now you're going to lose points off your license, and now your insurance company could take some action against you with regards to your policy. When people take traffic diversion and successfully complete it, they avoid that. They are not convicted, they don't have to pay court costs, they don't get points off their licenses. The proposal submitted by the Nebraska Safety, the Safety Council of Nebraska is the more comprehensive plan, and the requirements that I took for the RFQ that got placed in there were twofold. One is, I took a great number of them from the certification that the DMV requires for people to be able to teach and offer a stock class or a star class. That is where a bulk of the requirements came in, was from that DMV certification. The other part, components of the RFQ came in from what I deemed my office needs in order to have this run successfully. 10,000 people is a lot of people. We do more than Lancaster County does, we do more than Sarpy County does, we probably do more than the two of them combined. I believe Sarpy County operates their own program, and I think Lancaster County operates their own program as well. Operating my own program is not something that I think I'm interested in, and I think would cause a much greater expense to the city if the city prosecutor's office were to operate the program in a manner similar to Sarpy County does. So when I'm looking at the needs for my office and for these people to take this class, it's twofold. One is, I want people to be successful at taking this class. It produces better drivers, it produces people who are, everybody who's taken driver's ed or got their license when they're 16, sometimes they need a refresher course, whether they're 18 years old or 42 years old, they need that kind of refresher, and that class offers that, so they're better drivers, they're more suited, and more likely not to commit a similar offense in the future. A big component of it is, is that huge volume, we have to process that. And I do not believe that the Cornhusker Driving School is able to do that. I do believe that the Safety Council does have the means, both technology and both in the manner in which they handle it to better handle these types of offenses. Because what my fear is, is when these tickets are not adequately handled, so say you take the class, but it doesn't get entered in, and it still shows up as a conviction, and the ticket gets filed, well, that person thinks, I completed traffic school, I got a certificate, I'm well done. But if that's not accurately communicated to the prosecutor's office or the courts, that person's license is getting suspended. And those of you who do lawyer work or any criminal defense work or have dealt with people work, or any criminal defense work, or have dealt with people in your community, getting your license suspended is a big hassle. And it's an even bigger hassle to get your license back. So that is a problem that we strive to avoid. And I think the Safety Council's proposal assures me that that is not going to be something that is going to happen. In looking at the proposal, when the Safety Council provides their materials about their courses, they provide information on how they teach the courses, the method in which they teach the courses, the manner in which they teach the courses. It's not just the curriculum itself and the topics that are discussed in the courses, but they provide the actual manner in which they are going to do it. And I'm satisfied that that manner meets the requirements set out in the RFQ. They have an online class. They provided in their RFQ their, the class itself. They provided an actual link to go and take a look at the class itself. And I can tell you that the online class is very popular with people because it doesn't involve having to go down to the Safety Council and be in the class. You can do it from the luxury of your own home and in whatever time manner that you see fit to do it, do that. The Safety Council offers that. There was no indication in the RFQ that Cornhusker Driving School is going to offer that. It's simply something that they plan on doing, but there was no indication and no materials provided with that. Again, to reiterate my point, there were only two bids, and they were compared side by side and compared to the requirements in the RFQ. It was my assessment that after reviewing these, and I took about a week to look over the two bids after they were submitted to my office, that the Safety Council is the preferred choice and the one that best fits not only the needs of the city prosecutor's office, but I think more adequately addresses the needs of the community. This is the one program that this office has that affects citizens across the board in all seven districts, not only within the city, but also within the county as well. And I do think the Safety Council provided the best option. I am asking the council to approve the contract that's been drafted and enter into this agreement. And I would be happy to answer any questions that I'm able to. And as I said, there's individuals from the Safety Council here to answer any questions that would be more specifically directed to them.
In deference to those who may be here on a couple of other items, what I'd like to do, Matt, if you could stay at the microphone, please, because there may be a couple of people that, I know there's at least two people's lights that are on. I would rather address one item and get it out of the way as opposed to hearing everything and then going back, trying to have the council go back and ask questions of everybody that you hear comments from. So with, with Matt, if you could stay there, let's address this item first, and then we'll get to the others.
He's a proponent, and you want the opponent?
Yeah, I do want the opponents. So as soon as, well, that's right. Let me have you sit for a minute.
For this item.
For this item. And let me have the opponents, if there are any opponents.
Item 59.
Against item 59.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Pat Vendetti, 1235 Park Wild Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, representing Cornhusker Driving School. My telephone rang this morning at 3:00 a.m. And I thought, you know, maybe, just maybe, it's Jerem telling me, "Maybe Vendetti, you might have a long shot at that if you're there today." Well, it wasn't Chris. And I thought, well, maybe it's Palermo. I had called him, but I didn't get a return call. Picked up the phone, and it was my son. 3:00 a.m. in the morning. He's in Oklahoma City, as you may or may not know. He's a AAA baseball player. And he said, "Dad, I'll be in uniform tonight with the Los Angeles Dodgers against the St. Louis Cardinals." Well, that made this day even a little bit more stressful. So anyway, in addition to that good news, I wanted to just bring a similar story. You know, Vinnie, you were talking about athletics and coaching and, you know, not giving up and pursuing your dream, whatever it might have been. You know, I had a similar experience in the old market. I had a business. And the business was quite, quite expensive for me to start up in the old market, and I had to rent the building from Mr. Mark Mercer. And I had the building, I think, renting his building for about four or five years. And he came up to me just shortly thereafter and said, "Mr. Vendetti, we're going to have to move your business." And I said, "Where might that location be?" And it was in a location where you couldn't have found me with a microscope. And I told him, I said, "You know, I just don't think we can do business at that location." And he said, "You know, you really don't have much choice, because we're going to expand where you're located." And you know, there was a building not too far from where I was doing business. It was all boarded up. And I thought, geez, I wonder who owns that building. So I approached the agenda. I found out who owned it, called his home, and his wife told me that, you know, he was at a certain location, and this, this is where he would be. So I went down there to see him. And I told him what I was interested in. And he said, "You know, there's three people ahead of you. Come back next Saturday, and I'm going to let you know." He said, "But some of my Jewish friends are ahead of you." I had no idea who he was talking about. But I didn't give up. I went back that following Saturday. And he told me, he said, "You know, I haven't had a chance to talk to any of those people who are interested in my property. Come back next Saturday." And I did. That next Saturday was not very helpful. It was the same, but he had had a break-in that night before, and he wasn't interested in talking. But he knew who I was. And he knew the neighborhood from which I came. So the following Saturday, I walk in his office. And I said to him, I said, "Have you made a decision?" He said, "I'm going to sell you the building." And then, of course, right away, I'm wondering, geez, how much is this going to cost? He said, "Do you have a certain amount of money to put down on the building?" And I said, "Yes, I do." He said, "Who's your attorney?" I said, "I don't have one." He says, "Then we'll use my attorney." And that's exactly what we did. Didn't have an attorney. I had all the faith and confidence in this gentleman. I had no reason to disbelieve. Man, I know that's not the way you do business today. But that's the way I did business with that gentleman. And I gave him the check, the down payment. I bought the building, and I have that building even to this day. And it was just a matter of not giving up. And I saw the freight train coming down on this issue back in October when Mr. Cousy didn't want to meet with me, had no interest in meeting with me than the man in the moon. But he was gracious enough to allow me to come to his office with my staff, told us that the contract for this STOP program was coming up June 30. He says, "I'll be in touch with you." And I trusted that he would be in touch. I didn't hear from him, and I've called him. I had called him a half a dozen times. So finally, I get a letter from him. And, you know, if you don't mind, if I stay on script, let me do that. I want to stay on script rather than get ahead of myself. And I've given you in the folder the exhibits that we'll make reference to, and they are in alphabetical order. But first, my question is to you, Mr. President, members of the council, and perhaps the legal team as well. Since there were two bids given to the council, does that mean we're only going to take one bid, or is it possible to have two providers in this matter? And is the city council, is it within their purview to be able to have two providers instead of one?
Are you asking the law department, or are you asking me?
I don't know who to ask that question of. I, the member of the city council could answer that?
Why don't you let us ask the question?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Then, and I guess the point that I want to make to you is very simply this. I'm here today to request of the city council that we have two providers in the city of Omaha. And I, and I did want that for the record. In 19, I don't know, '85, I went to Mr. Burkino, the city prosecutor. And I went to him because I had an uncle who was on the district court bench. And he said, "You ought to go talk to Mr. Burkino and see if you couldn't become a provider." And I did. I went to Mr. Burkino and told him that I'd like to be a provider, just like I'm asking you today. And Mr. Burkino had no interest at all. And I didn't understand why. But I come to find out about a month later that he was on the Board of Directors, and his name appeared on the Board of Directors for the Safety Council. Obviously, that office to me is an appendage of the Nebraska Safety Council. Mr. Convoy, who came after Burkino, went to his office, said the same thing. "Mr. Convoy, Marty, I'd like to be a provider." And he gave me two reasons why we couldn't be a provider. Number one, there wasn't a need. 10,000 people going through this program, there's not a need. And number two, he said, "Because you're for-profit, we're not interested." I've got the letter to that effect. Because we're for-profit, he wouldn't be willing to. And neither Burkino nor Convoy were interested in sending this out to bid. And I, I want to thank each and every one of you for allowing this to go out to bid at our last council meeting. And if I may, Mr. President, and members of the council, if we could, if we could go to Exhibit E, please. In that letter dated May 9, "Mr. Cousy apologizes for not returning my calls. He apologizes for not setting up a meeting." And in that first paragraph, it says, "I apologize for not returning your calls about this matter. There have been several other matters in the office that have required my attention, and I feel I can better convey my position to you in a letter." And I guess my question to you, Mr. President, and members of the council, do you have the RFQ, the RFQ, the rationale for requirements, either the questions or the response from the Safety Council? Is that in your folder at all? I gave them to you. I gave you my questions in Exhibit A, and I gave you Exhibit A and B. That gives you the complete narrative of the questions asked by Mr. Cousy. And it was, and enclosed are my, are the responses of Cornhusker Driving School. And I might add, Mr. Cousy was very tactical in his planning this program, very, very tactical. And he knew, he knew well in advance, both in the last council meeting, and I believe his panic button was pushed. And Ms. Mayor, I know you're not here, but if your intercom is on, I have a couple of questions of you. And then, of course, the council, the Nebraska Safety Council, I believe their, their button was pushed, their panic button was pushed when you, Mr. Gray, said you had some serious concerns about the contract, and you wanted this matter laid over for 60 days. So my point to you again, do you have, Mr. Cousy's and the Safety Council, do you have their questions, their responses? You have mine? And is there some reason why Mr. Cousy didn't provide that to you today? It was easy for Mr. Cousy to throw us under the bus. I got this information on five days prior to the August 1 deadline, five days before. And Mr. Cousy's had this information since last October. And of course, he knew that we couldn't respond fully to all of his questions, and I did the best I could in the five days that I had. I think I'm going off script a little bit, but I wanted to make these points to you. As a matter of fact, Mr. President, that contract that we were looking at, the Safety Council was in violation of that contract when they raised their rates 22%. And I don't know how long they had been charging that. They went from, what, $89 to $107? And how many of those people that took that class were reimbursed the amount of money that they shouldn't have, that they shouldn't have paid without your consideration? And I believe that contract should have been immediately terminated, Mr. President, on those grounds alone. Meeting with Mr. Cousy back in October, and of course, again, I knew the freight train had started then. When I, when I saw Mr. Cousy, and I didn't know Mr. Cousy from Adam, but I got to tell you, it was obvious right from the get-go that he was an appendage of the Safety Council, no different than Burkino and no different than Marty Convoy. And it was easy, easy for him to throw us under the bus today with the contract that you have before you. But I want to tell you this too, Mr. President, members of the council. I, I have submitted, and I, and I'm not, I'm going off track here a little bit, Mr. President, but we'll come back to a couple of other items. Exhibit D, if you would please, Exhibit D. And I have a letter from my banker, and they're willing to provide the money, $10,000. If Cornhusker Driving School cannot fulfill the obligations of this contract, the city will be reimbursed $10,000. And if you want $20,000, we'll put that out. It may sound a little bit as if I'm being arrogant. I'm just being honest with you. You know, my family, all the workers that we have, were born and raised here. School in the, in the best of, the best university in the country as far as I'm concerned. High school, same. We're all right here. We're family here. I couldn't tell you one single person that I know from the National Safety Council. And in the brotherhood of the traffic safety, we all know who we are. But for some reason, they're in that little ivory tower, and they don't want anybody trespassing in that little ivory tower. This freight train started back in 1983. And I, I saw the forecast then, and I can see the forecast even today. But I'm not giving up, just like I didn't give up in that building that I bought in the old market. I believe each and every one of you, and I'm telling you that from my heart, I don't think any of you, I know you have a job to do, and I, and I trust each and every one of you, and I know you're being honest with me. But have you been, have you been lobbied on this matter from someone? I know when we met, last met, it seemed to me that the council was up in the air. You'd, but I just wondered, today, did you come in with a preconceived vote? And if you did, who was that person that, that gave you the information that kept, that keeps the freight train rolling? I don't, I don't know if you had been, and maybe you haven't been lobbied on this matter.
Yeah, Mr. Vendetti, I'm going to have to have you wrap it up.
Okay. And finally, Mr., well, a couple more things. In Exhibit G, and I believe this is contrary to what Mr. Cousy said. If you go to Exhibit G. And, Mr. President, can you tell me what Exhibit G is?
Exhibit G is Cornhusker Driving School. Just talking to you here.
Okay. It talks about the providers?
Yes.
In, in the counties. Why is it that we're the only county? We're the only county that has only one provider. All the other counties have multiple providers. And I believe Mr. Cousy said Lancaster County was on their own. That was not the information that was given to me. I understood that the National Safety Council was there, and true, I believe it's called True Driving School, the two of them run the program at the National Safety, in the STOP program. If I could, Mr. President, just, just allow me here. And then, Mr. President, going back to what you said early on in that last meeting in June, and you had some serious reservations, as well as you should have had. And you wanted to know the cost. Well, I attempted to look into the cost. And I, and I thought, well, maybe, just maybe, part of that reason that they're raising the rate from $89 to $107, I wanted to know why they were raising that rate. And I asked Mr. Cousy and staff, I believe her name was Maggie Gibson, and that's in Exhibit F. If you'll, if you'll reference Exhibit F, Mr. President. And in Exhibit F, it says this. According to, to Mr. Cousy's staff research people, I have received your, your fax dated May 28, requesting information regarding the contract renewal with the, with the Safety Council. You are correct. This is a renewal only. And Mr. Cousy was very, very explicit. We are not going to send this out to bid. We're going to vote on it the day of. I thought, why, does he have that kind of authority to do that? But going on, Mr. President, he said he received information from the city clerk that this resolution, again, was, was for renewal on the June 12 agenda. And there will be an opportunity to speak. The vote will also be held at that time. But then going on, Mr. President, I asked for the salaries of the Nebraska Safety, of the Safety Council. And according to the staff, it is none of your business. It is none of our business. Why isn't it our business? If these people are, if they're, if they're, if their matriculation fees are going up, what, 22, whatever it is, from $89 to $107, where's that money going? Is it possible that those people are making an exuberant, exuberant amount of money? I can tell you that when I first came aboard in the 1980s and 90s, the Nebraska Safety Council were holding their, their winter meetings in a very lavish place overseas. And then all of a sudden, you know, that little party stopped. And I guess to you, Mr. President, and members of the council, I think you should know what they make. I should, I think you should know who the top administrators are, and what their salaries are, and what other amenities they have, because we're paying for it. Our constituents, all of our constituents are paying for, for those, for those salaries there. And I am aware they built, we built their building there. I'm aware of Mr. Cousy, yes, they had a very elaborate scheme on their classrooms, as if that is so important, Mr. Cousy. And yes, Mr. President, anybody have any questions?
I, I think we're good. We're good for now, Mr. Vendetti. Thank you. I'm sure there are going to be questions in a few minutes. So are there any other opponents who wish to be heard specifically on this matter, item number 59? Any other, any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Well, first of all, I, I guess that, as Councilman Jerem spoke earlier, how he doesn't approve of, of speaking poorly. I don't think I ever spoke poorly against any of our directors. I don't believe in it. And I think it would be very difficult at this point in time to ask our city prosecutor to actually work with somebody who has actually accused him of being an appendage of somebody else, basically accusing Mr. Cousy of being unethical. I might disagree with things that any of, any of my council members, we might disagree on things. None of you are unethical. We might, I might disagree with some of the directors. I might want roads to go places where planning tells me they can't. I don't believe that they're, they're doing that for ulterior motives or because they're appendages of anybody. So, and I also want to say that I, I have actually practiced with Mr. Cousy, both on the same side as him, on opposite sides of him in the practice of law, and recommended Mr. Cousy for the position of city prosecutor. First of all, why? Because he is one of the most upstanding and ethical lawyers I know. When lawyers work for the city and continue to work for the city as county attorneys, as city prosecutors, I can tell you that most of them could be out in private practice making a lot more money. Mr. Cousy is one of those attorneys who actually serves the public and has chosen to be in this profession because he cares about the public. And yes, have I talked to Mr. Cousy about, about the, the contract? Yes, because I wanted to know what is it he needs in order to provide for the citizens of our community? Because it's people like my own son, who has gotten a speeding ticket and had to take the STOP class many years ago. I got one in, in Sarpy County, and I, I took a, I took a STOP class. Any one of us are going to be subject to this. And he's right. I've also had clients who have gotten their licenses suspended, and it has been a mistake for various reasons, whether it be on probation or for something else. And just trying to get a mistake corrected is very difficult. But if you don't have a process, and you don't have a process that works right, it's not Mr. Cousy, it's not one of the council members or myself that's going to suffer. It's the people that are relying on this program. And when you have 10,000 cases going through our city prosecutor's office, you need to have a working relationship with the person that you, that is doing this so that you can ensure that the people that sign up, pay for the class, get their case dismissed in a timely manner and in a process that works. Otherwise, you're going to have people that don't know what to do. How many of those people, and I know President Gray, you have people that, that call you all the time that are confused about various processes in our legal department that are confusing, that really you just need some direction, but they get themselves into, sometimes it's a mistake, sometimes it's not, and they don't know how to fix it. And that can cause actually greater problems. If your license, if it was mistakenly suspended, but you get caught driving, you're going to get a driving under suspension. You're going to have multiple charges that could end up with paying more costs and everything else. So I guess in, in these types of things, we defer to our directors all the time on contracts that, by the way, the city isn't paying for this. So we rely on our directors and give them the authority to choose who they feel is best, who they feel is going to serve the public the best, and who provides the most amount of services. And I, I can tell you that when you look at both of the responses, yes, I can understand how Mr. Cousy could, could select the Safety Council. They have done it. They've done it for a long time, and they've proven themselves. If you disagree with that or feel that, that we need to have two providers or something of that nature, that's fine. But I don't think it should be based upon, I don't know, some personal attacks on, on our city prosecutor that I think are not merited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding? Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll ask one of the questions Mr. Vendetti asked, just for the record, too, and Ms. Melton just kind of covered it, too. But for the record, I'll ask Mr. Kratz, could there be more than one service provider?
I'm not sure this is working. Apparently, it is. The way this RFQ was put out, it was geared toward one provider. So the council, at this point, is not in, could not be in a position where it divides it up. If you either vote this up or down. If you vote it down, then I guess we'd have to make a decision whether or not to go out and try to select two people, as opposed to one, if that's the will of the council. But at this point, it's up or down on this particular proposal.
Okay. Then, as long as I have you, I was going to ask Mr. Cousy, but as long as I have you, or Mr. Cousy, whichever one, are any of the terms that are spelled out in this agreement negotiable at this point?
I'll let Mr. Cousy respond to that.
MacCusie Law Department, Ryan Weeson is here. He drafted the contract in, I guess I can't say yes or no, unless I know what specifically you're referring to. If you're referring to the two-person thing, I'm not interested in having two providers.
No, that, and I wasn't, I'm done with that question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm on to, I guess, and if Ryan wants to come up, specifically, and I think we had some of this question on, the last time we discussed it, when, when it's talking about the fee increases of more than 10%. First of all, I think 10% on a, I don't think it's clear that it says annual, or year-over-year, or what. I think there needs to be some clarification on that. In addition to that, I think a 10% increase in any year is probably more than what should be allowed. I'd rather see something maybe like a cost-of-living adjustment, or something more reasonable. A 10% increase, I think, is probably too much. And then, what it, I think it also needs to be clear, because we had some of this conversation when we were discussing this 60 days ago, of whether or not they went over 10%, even though it was after a number of years, it was, it would have been less than 10% for each one of those years, but it was done at once, and it was more than 10%. So I just think that language needs to be cleared up.
Ryan Weeson, Assistant City Attorney, the terms of the agreement that are presently before you have been agreed to and signed off on by a representative of the National Safety Council. So to the extent that the council wanted any changes to those terms, then the city would have to go back and propose those changes to the National Safety Council, who could agree to those, or could not agree to those. With respect to the language on the potential fee increases, the agreement does provide that any fee change of less than 10% may be approved by written agreement of the parties, which would mean consent by the city and consent by the Safety Council. But it also includes a provision that for any fee change of 10% or greater, that that fee change must be approved by the mayor and the city council. So the city council would have a say in any fee change of 10% or more, under the terms of this agreement.
I understand that, but part of my comments were that, you know, I think 10% is, seems high. But if you're, if you're telling me we have to vote on the terms that are in front of us and can't be amended, which was interesting, I know the last time we had this conversation, there were some, there was some comment from the Safety Council that they would amend their, the costs that they were charging on the floor at the time. But, but if, what I heard you say is that these are the terms that have been agreed to, and that they're not negotiable at this point, then I guess I'll take that as your answer on that. Is that, and that's, is that a yes?
Any change to the terms would, it's essentially a counter, so the city would then have to go back to the Safety Council and see if they would be willing to agree to those terms.
When you read that, when you read that paragraph, which is Paragraph 4, it's on Page 2, Paragraph 4, near the bottom of the page, it's the last sentence on the page, and carries over to Page 3, where it says, "Any fee change of less than 10% may be approved by written agreement of the authorized representatives of the parties, so long as there is no added cost to the city. Fee changes that are 10% or greater must be approved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Omaha." When you read that, though, is, is there any restriction on time, as it relates to, like, on an annual basis? Or is it, do you feel, are you comfortable with that language, that there's, that can't happen by, I mean, they could do it multiple times in a year, less than 10% the way I read that?
As I look at the provisions of this paragraph, they have to be interpreted with respect to the agreement, and as a whole, all of the terms of the agreement. Paragraph 4, earlier in that numbered paragraph, it indicates stop class fee of $107, and the star class fee of $199. So interpreting the 10% with the fees that are set out in this agreement, I believe that that 10% would be based off of those fees that are specifically set forth. So in the event that those fee changes exceeded 10% of $107, or 10% of $199, and that may require approval of the city council and the mayor before it could go into effect.
I appreciate the response, but I don't think that answered the question.
Could you ask a question again?
Sure. You could have multiple fee increases during a year that do not require any approval from, from the city council?
I believe it's-
Or the mayor's office, that are less than 10%.
I believe that it's contemplated in the agreement that the fee changes would be aggregated. So that 10% number would be based off of $107, or $199.
I understand that. I don't-
Mr. Harding, do you think, can I, can I maybe help you out here with it?
Sure.
Let, let, let me ask you it this way. Can they raise the fee less than 10% more than once a year?
If you interpret the agreement as a whole, I think that would be prohibited. I think that would require council approval first.
I don't, where does it say?
Yeah, I don't know where it says-
I'm at a loss, where, because I've been through this, and I don't see where it says
Certainly, the, I believe the council could direct.
May I?
Yeah, please.
And could we ask at this point in time, although it's not in the agreement, could we ask Mr. Cousy to agree? Mr. Cousy, if you don't mind? Because I'm assuming, under this agreement, if it's not more than 10%, if it's less than 10%, then you are the person that would agree to the increase?
I, I understand, and I understand the question. The question is basically-
Before you go, Mr.-
Sorry, MacCusie Law Department.
Before you go, Mr. Cousy. Did I, did I ask adequately, get at what we're both are trying to get at here?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, okay.
But what I'm trying to do is get around the, because if it's Mr. Cousy that has to sign off on it, then we'd have to change the terms of the agreement. Well, we have the Safety Council here, we also have Mr. Cousy here, so we could ask Mr. Cousy to not agree, or agree with us, that you won't change it without giving us, you know, maybe some notification, or you would not agree to multiple increases.
MacCusie Law Department, I, correct, there'd have to be some level of trust between us that I think we can trust me that I would not agree to a fee increase in January, and then agree to another fee increase in February, and then another one in March. That is not something that I would agree to. I would certainly find that quite ludicrous if they were asking for multiple fee increases in the same year. I know that's not contemplated in the contract specifically, but I think it'd be an abdication of my responsibilities if I would find myself in a situation where I was routinely agreeing to their fee increase on less than a yearly basis.
And I, I'm sorry, I think-
Mr. Harding, go ahead.
Yeah, I still, so, I certainly did not, I guess I'm, I'm putting myself in a position where I'm being, where it looks like I'm questioning directors and prosecutors. No, 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 I'm being tongue-in-cheek. I'm not, I'm not saying that you would contemplate doing that. But what I'm trying to do is just avoid the conversation, or the accusations that have been made in the past about the fee increases, and that I think it would be, if you had tighter language in there that said, on an annual basis, that fees would not increase more than X, that's all I was trying to get at.
And I agree with that, but I have to turn that back over to Ryan, because he's the contract writer.
It looks like someone from the Safety Council might, oh, I'm sorry, Ryan, you popped up. Sorry.
Ryan Weeson, Assistant City Attorney, if the council would like to direct a change in the terms of the agreement, I believe there is a week left before the extension runs out, and we could attempt to get a new agreement executed within the next couple of days.
I think the body would probably like to make sure that we take care of this in relatively quick fashion, but, but it looks like Mr. Cousy may have had a conversation that he wants to tell us about.
I do, MacCusie Law Department. I've spoken with Ms. Booth from the Safety Council. She's agreed to, and I forgot your title, I'm sorry.
Vice President of Business Development.
Ms. Booth is the Vice President of Business Development at the Safety Council, that she would agree to. And again, I have to defer back to Mr. Weeson, or Mr. Kratz, that it can be agreed to, that there will be no fee increases in the amount that's already in there. It can only be done annually.
Mr. Kratz or Mr. Weeson, is that, would that be acceptable?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, yes, I think it would be, and the statement on the record would be sufficient.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
President Gray, so, I guess, who, whatever, like, these couple of questions, Mr. Weeson, seems that it's going back to you for the contract, so I'll ask you. So, to discuss more what we were just talking about, it's over 10% increase would have to come back to the council. So technically, each and every year, they could come to Mr. Cousy and request a 9% increase on that contract, every single year?
Ryan Weeson, Assistant City Attorney, I believe we just addressed that issue with Mr. Cousy's statement on the record, just 20 seconds ago.
Okay, then I missed it 20 seconds ago. So, so for the next, so for the next, the contract term, under 10%, the Safety Council could come before whoever the agreeing party is, who I trust, Mr. Cousy, but they could ask for a 9% increase per year, once a year? Because then we're getting back into that, 9% is quite a bit.
The contract could be interpreted in that manner, yes.
And then also, because I looked through my notes, and I think the biggest problem we had last time was that exact same definition, how it wasn't spelled out properly. And it was also the term where we talked about, when you have two organizations that are qualified, at least in our eyes and what we see, you're almost locking a small business out when you agree to a 10-year contract. Because I don't see the five-year plus the five-year, I see 10-year. Could you tell me the term?
Ryan Weeson, Assistant City Attorney, the term for this contract is a 10-year contract. The term for the previous contract was a 10-year with two five-year options to renew for a potential total of a 20-year term. The council elected not to exercise its right to renew for an additional five-year period under the former contract, which is why we're here today. And that provision, the two five-year options to renew, are not contained within this contract.
So this is a 10-year contract that could possibly be upgraded 9% every year?
This is a limited 10-year contract that, by agreement of the parties, there could be a fee increase of 9%? Yes.
So by year 2028, this contract could increase 90%?
Again, it would, any fee increment, increase would require an agreement of the parties, or agreement of the mayor and the city council as well, depending on the amount.
Okay, thank you. And then, for Mr. Cousy, I'm trying to look through all this. I know the Safety Council has two separate fees for stop and the star, and so does Cornhusker. The fees are different, and that's fine, but I know for us, there's part of that that's remitted back to the city?
Correct.
Could you tell me, on each side, what is remitted back to the city?
Under Mr. Vendetti's plan for Cornhusker Driving, with his price structure, he indicates that he will remit $41 back to the city. For the Safety Council, I believe it's 45.06, but let me check and make sure I am correct. For the Safety Council, it is $45.06 that is remitted back to the city.
So through the Safety Council, it would be roughly a little less than, well, $3 or $4 more. But if we're talking about the people who are actually getting these tickets, the Safety Council's fees are quite a bit larger for those people who would have to actually get into one of these two classes.
Yes, the Safety Council is proposing to charge more than what the other proposal is.
I would just say with the notes I have, and with going back to remember this conversation, the two items that I disagreed with the most, which was the terms, and the amount that it can increase without coming before the council, they're still in place, so, lies is gone, but I would like to take this item off the, our separator, right? Are we doing that, the consent agenda?
Do you want to pull it from consent?
Do you want to take it off consent?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jerram.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just doing some quick math. If you, if it's point, if it's 9.99 or .099 increase in year one on the base level course for the stop class, in year two, without council or mayor approval, it could be 117.59. Compounding every year, that 117.59 could be 129.23 in two years. 142 and 2 cents in three, and I hadn't gotten to year four yet, but you can see how rapidly that could accelerate without any review. So, that's a, that's a very concerning figure. I'd like to know, from Mr. Weeson, how did we arrive at the 10% threshold in terms of the, what would trigger a review, when most city contracts we see have very modest cost-of-living 3%, things like that?
Ryan Weeson, Assistant City Attorney, I believe that, that 10% number was taken from previous contracts that had been approved by previous councils for this type of program. Additionally, there is a provision of the Omaha Municipal Code, Section 10-142, which just generally states, any amendment to contracts or purchases which take in the loan increases the original fee as awarded, A, by 10%, if the original fee is $150,000 or more, or B, $75,000 or more, shall be approved by the city council in advance. So there is parallel language in the code that has a 10% figure. So it would be consistent with other agreements that are in place throughout the city.
Older agreements?
Yes.
So one of the things that happened in 2009, when we, those of us who were here at the time, we, we had a city that was upside down financially. And so we've, over time, had very painstaking efforts on all sorts of contracts to rein in the policies and practices of the old, with more conservative escalators in contracts, among other things that we did, in terms of contract concessions to control the growth spending rates of the city. And I see the Safety Council, you're standing up, Ms. Booth, did you have something to say, or are you just stretching your legs?
Susan Booth with the National Safety Council. If the big concern is the compounding of the 9% increase or the 10% increase, we would absolutely agree to a 4% increase year-over-year, if that makes you comfortable. I think cost of living is between 3% and 4%, so we'd have no problem with saying 4% adding that to the contract. One thing to keep in mind is you are looking at the increase that we have had over the past. That's been over 25 years. It wasn't a one-time, you know, every year, but we would absolutely be willing to take that contract, put it 4% and move forward with it.
Thank you. You can sit down.
Thank you.
One of the things we can't do, we've been told in the past, is amend the contract while it's on the floor. Mr. Kratz, is that still the rule?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, that is the rule, but like Mr. Weeson has said, if the council proposes a, an amendment of, I guess, no more than 4% a year, that would then be up to the Safety Council, whether or not they want to accept that. It's simply a counter-proposal. So from that standpoint, the council could make an amendment, and it's up to the Safety Council, whether or not they want to accept that or not.
And while you're there, one of the questions that was asked before of you is whether this is a single-source, dual-source. As I understand it, there's nothing that prevents- As I understand it, there's nothing that prevents there being a second source for the provision of services unless there was a contract that, that was passed that provided this as a sole source, is that correct?
At this point in time, it'd be too late, though. It's, they would have to go out with the RFQ indicating that the city would look at two different sources. At this point, after the RFQ's gone out, it's been, they've selected somebody. It'd be inappropriate at this point to split up the, the award.
Okay. Well, the escalator is concerning to me. I don't, I don't know, given what we've been told in the past in terms of losing bidders, if we amend the contract that was the basis of the competition to allow a favor to the putative best bid that is to be recommended for award, I have concern that if Mr. Vendetti were to take us to court, that A) we would be vulnerable to that, and B) I don't know what the answer would be. Although I'm sure Mr. Kratz and, and Mr. Weeson would do a fine job advocating the city's argument as he's laid out. I do see the compounding did get the contract at .099 increase over 10 years at $250, in case you were wondering what it would be from the 107 start. So if you took basically half of that, it's still a pretty big increase. First, I did want to say to Mr. Vendetti, I, I know you're a small business person, I know you're passionate about what you, what you do, but I do think at times, say, you crossed what I thought was the bounds of decency and the standards I think you'd even hold yourself to in, in how you were referring to Mr. Koozie. I was disappointed in that. I know him, I've known him quite a number of years, and he, he is of impeccable character. He has not lobbied any of us that I know of. He's simply sent a note asking if any of us had questions about this, that we could feel free to contact him, just as you did. And he did not, with me, and I, and I can't speak for the others, he did not insert himself in this, in the advocacy role, other than what he has said from the beginning, that I really want and believe it's in the best interests of my office to have a single-source provider. And we may quarrel about who he thinks is best equipped to do that, being Mr. Koozie and me, because I believe your company is a good company. I think your company would do a, a good job at providing this service. But the bottom line, what I've said from the beginning is, is that at some point, I have to defer to the professionals that I know are, are really good at what they do. And he is really good at what he does. And I may have these issues with this contract that may, because of cost, cause me to cap this, this escalator thing at, at non-compounding at, at 2.5% or 3% or something like we see in other contracts. But I, I, as I've said with Mr. Koozie, and I've said with you, I don't think I want to get in the position today to handcuff him and how he thinks he best needs to carry out the job that we've asked him to do and, and hold him to pretty, pretty tough reporting standards in terms of what he, his deliverables are for the money that we allocate appropriate to him. But like you, I'm not so sure, having learned about what the Safety Council did in terms of increasing the price, that's something that we, we're not, the citizens that went through and were charged the increased rate before there was permission aren't owed an explanation and a coupon or refund or something on, because that's very concerning to me, how that happened, and I said that last time. And I'm also concerned that I don't find a conspicuous path advertised in terms of public awareness on how people who are poverty-stricken, who have the same practical issues as those who are not, can have access to, to scholarships for their program. And that was, that's a concern to me. But in the end of the day, as much as I would personally want to award this to your business, that isn't what I think the role here is today for me. Is this contract that this prosecutor, who I know and has impeccable credentials, and feels this is what he needs to do to, to do his job best, is this what we should do? And so that's why I'm inclined to go that route, relying upon what our city attorney has said and asking if the parties, being Mr. Koozie and Ms. Booth, would agree to a non-compounding threshold less than 3%, not requiring approval, but if it's equal to or greater than 3% per year, that it comes through the mayor and city council. So Mr. Koozie and Ms. Booth, if you'd come up.
Ms. Booth?
Susan Booth, National Safety Council.
Most of our contracts at the city that I'm familiar with have a 3% threshold in them. And you said you were okay with a 4% non-compounding threshold where it would require mayor approval and city council approval, but I'd ask you if you would also be comfortable with 3%?
Yes, sir.
Annual, non-compounding, okay. Mr. Koozie, are you okay with that?
It's really up to the Safety Council, I, I don't have any problem with it, so I guess, on behalf of my office and the city, I don't have a problem with that, but I really have to defer to the Safety Council since it's their cost.
I also want to just kind of make sure that what we're doing is, it's not required that they do it annually. Because I don't want to insert that in here where it's not mandatory, and it still requires both the city and Safety Council to agree, but in a year, if Mr. Koozie does not feel that there is a need for a 3% increase, he doesn't have to agree to it.
Thank you for, just to clarify the motion, it's not to change the language which requires mutual agreement of the parties for that.
That's correct, and we're okay with that.
Great, I would make that motion to amend.
Second. That's on item 59, and we did take it off consent, so we can, we can vote on that now. But we've got some other lights, Ms. Melton, are you done? Okay, Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, President Gray. I guess the important part here is what's remitted back to the city, and if the percentage is going to go up annually based on what you agree upon, does that go up that same percent? Because otherwise, we're stuck at the same fee for 10 years.
And I'm sorry, I, I, can you repeat that again?
I'll ask it again. Under this contract that's being proposed in front of us, the Safety Council's agreeing to remit $45.06, I guess, per either Stop class or Star class. And the amendment is to, at 3% without coming to the city council, would you agree to also amend that remittance back to the city?
Are you looking for a guarantee that it would also be 3%?
No, I'm saying if you raise your prices, the city should also get 3%.
Right, and I don't have a problem with that.
Does he?
Yeah.
Mr. Weeson?
Brian Weeson, Assistant City Attorney, if you continue on reading in that same paragraph, it does state that any time that there is a fee change, that the portion of the fee that's remitted to the city shall be adjusted in accordance with the Consumer Price Index for other goods and services as published by the United States Department of Labor and Labor Statistics.
So that would all fall into line that if there was an increase, because there doesn't have to be, but if there was, then the city would also get a percentage of the increase?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to amend, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I, I just get pretty uncomfortable when I get in these situations and we're trying to dot the i's and cross the t's on something like this that's contractual in nature. I, I don't think this is the best form to do that at the diocese. And Mr. Palermo, I ask you a good question, and that might not be the only question that we should be reading back through when we start talking about doing something like this. So I know we have the agreement from both parties at the diocese here, and that might be the will of the body, but I, I just wanted to voice that it makes me pretty uncomfortable. And I would note that, I think Mr. Weeson said, we do have one more week left on, on the deadline for this RFQ, I guess you'd say. That wouldn't make it unconsiderable, should we just delay it one week and make sure everything's tied up in a bow and not by us on the fly? Did you want to respond to that?
The only concern I have with laying it over for the contract with the amendments that you're proposing is if that, if something should happen next week, somebody wants something else changed, come September 1st, I do not have a traffic diversion provider, and nobody will be going, there's, there'll be none, there's no traffic safety diversion program at all starting September 1st, because we, that will be the end of their contract with the Safety Council, and I will have no providers. That's just me being devil's advocate in that situation, and I don't want to be in that situation. I know your constituents don't want to be in that situation, but if we, if we run up against that clock like that, there's no traffic diversion after September 1st for anybody in Omaha and Douglas County.
Mr. Jarom.
And people already are registering. That's the problem. And so that's why I completely agree with what you're saying. And this isn't the place to be doing this, or the time to be doing this. But there are people who are registering and who need to register, who need an answer. And as much as, as I'd like to personally give it to Mr. Vendetti, I think as amended, as I've said, I am going to support Mr. Koozie's request.
It's been moved and seconded to amend item 59 in the manner that we talked about, no, no more than 3% without coming to the council.
Less than?
Less than 3%. More than 3% has to come to the city council and mayor. Is that the, is that the amendment?
Yeah.
Thank you. Equal to or greater than 3%. With that understanding, roll call.
Pauls.
I'm sorry. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, President Gray. So, just so I'm perfectly clear, because I want to make sure we don't fall back into something like we had in my district not that long ago, where we made an agreement without actually having something in front of us, and it turned into this month-after-month problem. We definitely should not be talking contracts up here, I think even legal said that we're not supposed to talk contracts. I'm still going to vote no today, and not because I don't think that either one party is qualified to do it, but it's this process that we're discussing it right now in this open, public forum, which is not right. We can sit here and say what we're going to do, but if we agree upon this without something in front of us in writing... It's on the record?
So, it can be, can...
It is on the record.
It's on, it's on the record.
There's a lot of stuff on the record right now, is my point, though. So I'm not 100% clear on where we're at.
It will be in writing, because you can take it, then you get a transcript. So it, the record then becomes an official document, so it's recorded.
Regardless of how the, the will of the council is today, I think we should take it upon ourselves to not decide contracts at a city council meeting, thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to, for the amendment on item number 59, that says 3% or less. No less than 3%.
Less than 3% mutual agreement, equal to or greater.
Oh, you did not say that correctly. Madam Clerk, would you read?
Read the motion.
Read it.
Okay, of less than 3% mutual agreement, equal to or greater than 3% goes to council and mayor, annual, non-compounding.
Non-compounding.
Correct.
Okay, that's the motion, it's been moved and seconded, there are no further lights, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jarom. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Amendment is approved, 5 to 2. Item 59 as amended.
Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jarom. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 59 as amended is approved, 5 to 2. And then we still need to take up the remaining items on consent.
Now, the public hearing on the rest of the agenda items. If anyone here is in, in favor of, identify the item number which you wish to address, identify yourself, name, address, who you represent, and if you're a proponent or a proponent.
Well, first of all, whoo! Lord, I'm barcy. My name is Kevin Reddick, and I represent Reddick Management Corp., DBA Husker Tree and Landscaping, and I'm a proponent.
For which item?
Item number 53.
53.
I'm here for basically phase two of that particular project, but it's under the City of Omaha Small and Emerging Business Program, the participation utilization form. They have on there a term that I, I'm not sure about. It's the no reserve term under the identified scope. I tried to call Human Rights and Relations to find out what that meant. There was no one there that could give me an answer. So I, I'm hoping to maybe get an answer of what, what does no reserve mean under the identified scope, and why is it listed on the...
Who let the bid? Yeah, I guess.
Do you, did you bring it with you?
I do have a copy of the bid documentation, yeah. Would you like to see it?
Who bid at the job, I mean, which department bid at the job, they should be...
Would it be Parks or Public Works? Does anybody know?
It's the...
Planning?
The project is the tree trimming and removal and neighborhood action, in fact, right-of-way north of Omaha, Phase Two. It, it bids out on August the 29th of next week.
Maybe we can help.
This is the purchase order.
Yeah, this is the purchase order.
To award you the contract.
We're giving you the contract.
Right, no, yeah, but no, I'm, I'm talking about Phase Two.
Oh, that's going out today.
That's going out today later.
Oh, okay, so I can't...
If you stick around, though, we'll, we'll get you an answer.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's mainly what I was concerned about, because I know that there's tier-one, you know, contractors...
Yeah, there's Phase One and Phase Two for Paint Neighborhood Action, in fact, you're right.
Right, 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 it was on the Phase Two portion that I was asking about.
Yeah, that comes out, yeah, that'll come out, that'll go out to bid soon. But you can get your answer to the one question you asked. If you stick around after this, you can get that question answered.
Okay. See how easy that was?
Thank you for coming down and sticking around for that long, just for that.
Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents on any of the, any of the resolution issues? If not, public, say, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve all the items with the exception of 59, which is already approved, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jarom. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0. Item 61, in ordinance to designate the Carnation Ballroom located northeast of 24th and Miami Streets as a landmark, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing, agenda item number 61, is today, proponents please.
Hi, my name's Brian Wetstone, I'm with Restoration Exchange Omaha, and both myself and Restoration Exchange actually prepared this landmarks application that we then presented to the Landmarks Heritage Commission body last year, and then that also went to the planning board last year as well. So it was encouraging to hear the lively debate about jazz that happened earlier in this meeting, because that is primarily what this site is associated with historically. So, when we started the research process on this structure last summer, we knew we were facing a, a tough challenge with the building in terms of historical resources that we could gather and identify why the building was of significance. We had at our disposal primarily the Omaha World Herald and the Omaha Star Newspaper Archives to sort of help us with that research process. So, on our end, we didn't want to be individuals coming into the neighborhood and, and telling people that lived in this particular area of town why this building was significant. We wanted actually the opposite to happen, where we wanted personal testimony from longtime residents who remembered when the Carnation Ballroom was in operation to tell us why that building was significant, why it was worthy of this designation. So towards that end, we, we conducted a series of oral history interviews with individuals that had lived in the neighborhood for a really long time, two of which were Calvin Keys, who's a jazz guitarist, perhaps could be invited back for this event.
International jazz guitarist, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and, um, Daniel Goodwin Senior, who owns the Goodwin Spencer Street Barber Shop up, up on North 24th Street. Those are just two of the individuals that we, um, had conducted interviews with. And so, uh, two of the primary reasons that this site emerged, um, of significance to the city and to the neighborhood was both for its association as a jazz ballroom, um, in the 1950s, um, but also as a community hub in this area of the city. So, um, political activists came and used the Carnation Ballroom as a site for various political rallies and sort of, um, emerging African-American conscious, consciousness efforts in the neighborhood. Um, there were healthy baby contests in the neigh, in the Carnation Ballroom as well, um, as well as, oh, the Mildred Brown, who operated the Carnation Ballroom and opened the Omaha Star Newspaper, was the one that owned it, and she opened it to a variety of other civil rights organizations, um, in the neighborhood as well that were kind of emerging in the 50s before the, uh, big civil rights movement of the 1960s. So, um, to not, not to ramble about, about the specifics of this building's history, but, um, it is a, a worthy piece of, um, the, of the historical urban fabric of North Omaha, both as an extant building that's still standing on North 24th Street, but also for, um, its historical importance as this jazz center of North Omaha and as a community center in the neighborhood as well. So, I'd be happy to take any questions that you guys might, might have, but I know there are other proponents as well.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard? I'm sorry.
A picture of the building?
Uh, yeah.
Just trying to place it.
Carnation? Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I just think it'd be neat to see the.
Yeah, yeah. It needs some work, though. Be advised, it needs some work, but it's.
Don't lots of landmark buildings need to be?
Yeah. They'll turn it off for you. You don't need to turn anything on. Just put it on the, put it on the easel and it'll face up.
Okay. So this is... This is a street view of the building, looking...
North.
Yeah, looking north on, on 24th Street there, as you sort of approach it from the south. There we go. That's just a street level view of the, of the front of it. Um, there's the 24th Street facade, and it, and it was these two buildings that were, um, built as two separate businesses in the 1920s and then merged sometime before Mildred Brown bought the building in the late 1940s. So there's the south half, north half, um, the north side of the building, backside of the building, on the Miami Street side. So there are a number of original features that still survive, but as, um, Councilmember Ben Gray has noted, it is, uh, in, in somewhat rough condition, which was, um, part of what inspired the movement to actually landmark the property to protect it from any further deterioration. We're not certain how Mildred Brown had, um, organized the interior space of the building, so, um, in regards to questions of the physical integrity of the site from when it operated as the Carnation Ballroom, we can't really speak to what it actually looked like. We weren't able to find any historic photos. The in, with the people that we interviewed, um, only were able to note that the interior was spacious, which it remains to this day, so, um, it has these I-beams that are original to the structure as well. And you can see that at one point it was also sort of converted back into two separate addresses um, after the Carnation Ballroom ceased operating there in, in 1959. There I am, standing there. Um, this is the north half of the building with the large hole in the middle of the floor. I think it was turned back into an automotive shop, and this was where the equipment was stored at one point, so.
Uh, Mr. President, can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
I don't, I think my light's not on, but I, one more. Will this status, will this give you the ability to perhaps get additional funding grants, I mean, tax credits that, in order to help renovate the, the space?
Yeah, and the, the owner of the property, Ben Swan, is here today, and I'm sure he can speak to that as well. But the local landmark status does make the building eligible for state historic tax credits, which I think is about 20% of, of that project, of any kind of rehabilitative project, um, offset in that, in the form of that tax credit.
Okay.
And also, Ms. Melton, it falls within the opportunity zone that was recently passed.
So there'll be multiple. I just wanted to know what that, giving it the landmark status with additional benefits that would give to, to help renovate that building.
And of course, it gives it that protected status as well, that, um, saves it from demolition and any kind of crazy exterior renovations as well, so.
Thank you for coming down, and thank you for sitting through about two and a half hours in order to present it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
My name is Henry Nunn, 523 North 33rd, Apartment Three. Uh, I also wrote a grant application for the building we were speaking about for CDGB, CD, pardon me, CDBG funds. So the repairs that you're talking about have been, like, we know they need to be addressed. Um, I simply wanted to keep this brief and offer my support. Uh, this building falls within a neighborhood revitalization strategy area. And to me, it is important that if we genuinely want to keep the community's interests at heart and at the center of what we're doing with the revitalization and restoration of this building, that I think it was necessary to preserve a concrete piece of history, which Brian has already pointed out to you, that the building was with all the historic, the nationally acclaimed musical acts that passed through Omaha, put Omaha on the map as far as the blues, uh, jazz scene, especially back in a time when it was a developing genre of music. Personally, I have grown up in the North Omaha community, and I think it's important that, um, as there is all this development and revitalization of the North 24th Street corridor, that the community's residents are heard and their interests and their history is appreciated just as much as the possibility that the future holds of the revitalization of this neighborhood. I can also answer any questions regarding the grant application or the use of funds if that is appropriate or something that is desired by the city council.
Thank you. And, and also, I think we should acknowledge also that the president of Long School Neighborhood Association, Ms. Juanita Johnson, is here as well, and she's part of the 24th Street Neighborhood Corridor Alliance. Um, so thank you all for your presentation. Are there any other, uh, any other proponents who wish to be heard? If you like, yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Juanita Johnson. My address is 2520 Franklin Street. And as Councilmember Gray already pointed out, I'm the president of Long School Neighborhood Association and also the chairperson, uh, chairman of the board for 24th Street Corridor Alliance. I've had the opportunity to work, uh, alongside with the owner, Ben Swan, for one to two years. And during that period of time, he's demonstrated to me that he's very reliable and very, um, um, very, um, resourceful in terms of, um, fulfilling anything that he's committed to doing. So I am here today to support this effort of the, uh, restoration of the Carnation Ballroom. So I am a proponent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing up, were you going to get up?
I was, but it's.
Okay, that's okay. If, if you're good, we're good. Uh, so, okay, public hearing closed, next item.
Item 62, in ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for Village Point to allow for automotive sales located at 225 North 170th Street, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 62 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item 63, in ordinance approving a bid from Priority One Carrier and Delivery LLC in the amount of $121,413 to provide delivery services between 12 public libraries for a period of one year.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 63 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Non-action items, item 64 through 79, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jaram.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 4:38.